About ten minutes, there might be some discussion from the council and then we'll open it up to the public and, and.
Okay, thank you Mayor and City Council. I have just a few slides here. Cut to the chase real quick. As most of you are aware, these were the alternatives that we've been looking at for the past several months, including a no build option. I won't touch on all these individually, but we have narrowed this down now to one preferred alternative that we feel like is the best fit that we want to move forward with. And. Suspense.
Can you voice these?
Okay, I'll just try to touch the button here only. So we will, we are, we're presenting the C1 alternative of our preferred alternative. Now, if you're familiar with this, this is the alternative that's been known as the braided ramps. It, uh, it has, it maintains an interchange at the existing Main Street and includes another access point further to the north for a future NIBO Beltway connector. And it has what we call braided ramps that kind of interconnect the two for the most free flow traffic that we, we can have between them. And this was selected with these, kind of the main considerations was design and operational considerations based on traffic, impacts to the resources, community and economic considerations, cost, public and agency input and regulatory input. So here is a schematic of what this alternative is. You can see that the Main Street, the current Main Street interchange is down in the lower left there. And the proposed new NIBO Beltway kind of goes diagonally there from bottom right up to, towards the top center with an interchange there. And then in between those is kind of a series of on and off ramps that actually kind of braid over each other so that each of those interchanges acts independently with oncoming and exiting traffic to the freeway. I may just come back to the slide and leave this on the screen. This might be the best one to have as a visual guide if we take questions here. So next steps. This is a little bit unusual, not, well, I shouldn't say unusual, but we're making this announcement just about a week ahead of actual releasing the publication of the DEIS, the draft, environmental impact statement. Usually that would be kind of the announcement of the preferred alternative, but we know that there's been a lot of attention towards this and a lot of discussions, so we want to put this out as an announcement now, but the full document will be published on the 29th and that will start the public comment period where we will be accepting any and all comments from public and anyone else involved or agencies who weigh in on this. There will be a formal public hearing at Pace and High School on the 26th of October from six to nine P M. An opportunity will be to, to leave your comments there at that time and that would be a little bit more of an in-depth discussion of how we justify our decision. Today's just a little bit more of a very high level announcement. We will, when public comment period ends November 13th, we will then take all those comments. They'll need to be addressed. We'll, we'll, they'll be officially part of the record upon this and we'll work towards a decision and final approval of the EIS by mid next year. And then currently we do not have funding for construction of this project, so even with an approved final EIS, there's still quite a few more steps there that permit fund and construct and I really couldn't answer those questions very well at this point. So here's our, our public hearing. And I'm going to, I'm going to back up to this slide. This may be kind of the best one. Just keep on the background here. That's really my, my announcement, I guess. I'd like to be able to answer any questions that the council and the working group have regards to this and I'm happy to stay as long as I'm invited here to answer questions from beyond that.
I guess I have one question. So when Main Street comes up to nine north, would they put a light there?
I see six north there, is that?
No, so if you're coming northbound where, you know, where most of the Pace and High School properties, where it comes up there meets the road as it makes the bend, would you have a light right there?
On the bottom left side.
Yeah, currently we're not planning to have a light there. It's a intersection at this point. There could be a light installed at some point if it's, if it's warranted. You're talking about the on the left hand side?
Yeah, just that's where, that's where all our, the Geneva off, they bring the big trucks to there and I mean, to me it'd be pretty high volume traffic really. You don't turn on that road anyway.
That, that will be, when we move this looking forward past environmental approved, as traffic signal light there is really not a, a huge consideration in environmental document, but when this moves into actual design and traffic counts are a little more counted natural, that could very likely have a traffic signal there if it's warranted.
Anything else from the council?
I don't have any questions. I just think this is the best alternative for Pace and. Because anything else particularly closing Main Street would destroy her downtown or her core area in my mind.
Mayor and Linda, do you have anything?
No, I, I guess I missed the first one. What was, we had the braided exit and what was the other option?
Well, C1 braided, that's kind of what we unanimously thought was the best option for Pace and and Main Street and everything else is, we were all in agreement on C1 braided.
Yeah, Mayor, preserves both, uh, both the current location as well as the other location having on ramps and off ramps.
It also opens up the, the north part of Pace and for future development. In fact, you probably have a lot of development comes in.
We got the, uh, the public hearing will be on the 26th. Is that what he said, the High School?
October.
October 26th.
October 26th. Okay.
Twenty-six.
Did the, uh, did anybody for the church there?
Yes, yes, there is.
Okay. Just to make sure that they knew what was going on. So, that's all the questions I had.
I have a question. Um, just to remind us and me, as the EIS study is good for five years before it has to be renewed, is that correct? If, if nothing happens on the project?
Well, it kind of depends, yes, on if it's active or not. And activity could include fairly minor things like purchasing properties and some preliminary things like that. So once it becomes final, we will, we'll do everything we can not have to revisit that and keep it active. This is a little bit unusual to have an EIS approved so far ahead of a construction funded project. Usually they go together a little sooner and that's not too big of an issue and I don't anticipate that being an issue either.
And has, has there been any discussion with U V U on this alternative yet or? Cause I know they have some options, land, plus by this, do you know?
No, we have not discussed anything with U V U and we tried to, to separate future development from, from a document like this and not complicated with that. Uh, one thing, one comment that I would like to make, I know that everybody generally here probably favors this and, and and UDOTs are putting it forward as the preferred option. But during public comment period, we do still receive all the comments from everybody else involved, which would include agencies and stakeholders and, and that, and comments won't always be favorable from everybody involved. And, you know, and so we, we gather those and have to address those and and at the end of the day, to have it final and signed, it, it has to show that it's justified and, and stand up as the best fit for all these comments.
I think it's the best alternative that we have and I'm excited about it and, and one thing, it saves our historic homes on Main Street but it keeps Main Street open, so I think it's the best for everybody. So, thank you.
Mayor, did you have a comment?
Yeah, what's the, um, timeline of, uh, when they approve this to when we can start getting it on our MAC projections? To get the funding?
Well, it, it's on there now as, as kind of a generic foot plan. It can be, uh, it can become a little bit more defined, but it is already on the MAC long range plan, so I don't think that that needs to change. But what, what is significant is having a signed environmental document will help move that forward for funding and right away acquisition preservation.
Okay, well, we can really start pushing that here in another few months then. Why don't we start pushing it right now?
Uh, you can start pushing it whenever, however you'd like.
Next congressional session is when you want to be hitting them up.
UDOT, UDOT will not, uh, will, will not lobby and do things like that. We will just recommend it based on its traffic and need merit and, you know, and deal with it that way.
Right. But we can all be for it. Can we not?
You, yes, you can. Anybody can do that.
Linda, Councilman Carter, do you have anything?
Uh, yes, I'm, I, it's really hard to announce here very well. I'm not sure exactly where the second exit is. Is it east of the current that we have?
Yeah, it's like eight tenths of a mile, isn't it?
Yes, it's just almost a mile northbound from the current Main Street interchange, so it, uh, I don't know if there's a better way to describe that. I don't know.
They can go online and look at the different.
Yeah, the maps are online, online.
Yeah, this map is, the C1 alternative is, is showing on the website. It hasn't changed now for quite a while.
Okay. I want to thank you for shaking hard homes on Main Street. I know that means a lot to the citizens of Pace and, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody from the audience would like to?
I have two things real quick if I can. Um, this is mostly for the Pace and residents out here. Two things I would recommend, like if you're ready for this to move forward, the way lobbying doesn't just happen on the city level. If concerned citizens get out and they call your state representatives, I would recommend calling Representative Roberts, Senator Henderson, Representative McHale, getting them on the line and say, hey, this is important to our community and we want growth and they will go to bat for us to make sure that it gets funded sooner rather than later. Cause the funding process now goes to, to your state elected officials. They're the ones who funded it. If there's no money from the state legislator, it doesn't move forward. Now, I guess on the flip side, if you don't want it, I guess you can call them and tell them that you don't want it, but I think this is good for our community. The second thing I have is one of the things we found out when we met last time is that when they take your public comment, the more specific you are, the more it matters. So if you said, this is good for our economy because it opens up areas of Pace and, or it doesn't close off Main Street or, or whatever it is, but they want to hear from you and the more of you that comment, the more they get kind of good feel of what Pace and wants. I think it's kind of important that as a community. And I'm not going to tell you what to say. I think this is a good idea personally and I'm excited for the C1, but, but many voices can go a long ways. So be involved.
Anybody from the audience? Dave?
I'm going to anticipate the signed document after the public hearing and the process.
Well, there's kind of a, a best case.
Worst case?
Good, easy comments and then there's worse with some really tough, challenging comments and you know, if everything went smoothly and nobody really had issues and we could really show that this clearly fits best for everybody, it would be probably late spring of 2018, Andrea, summer. Uh, and if we really get challenged, you know, if the federal and environmental agencies and others really challenge this, you know, you've got to remember that, you know, there's, there's a dozen groups of stakeholders and I'm standing here talking to one and the other 10 may have a, a different view and may have some real issues with this and if they challenge it and tie things up and you know, there's really no telling how long worst case could go down, but it, it's never very fun and it takes a while if, if things like that come up.
I have a question, going back to those, those other stakeholders, haven't they kind of already looked at this and signed off somewhat? So there shouldn't be any surprises or anything?
Yes and no. So we, we tried to, to involve and work through things with everybody and, but there's no official sign off from them until the final. So we kind of have an idea of what they like, what they don't like. And, and we, sometimes we have to be frank and say, we acknowledge that this is not in your best interest on this aspect, but we, we're still going to move forward with it. And so there's, there's probably dozens of, of technical points in here that different stakeholders disagree with, that they can take issue with. And, and we hope that our process has, we've done our homework, we've identified everything, we've included everybody, so we're as educated as we can be. But they still have the ability to, to not like it and, and not concur, I guess, with it and cause comments that need to be addressed and we, we hope that we brought them along in the process and included them.
But if it's not at the state and federal, we don't have to worry about them not liking it though. Everybody's good with the state and federal level, right?
Well, it depends what, who you mean, state and federal. You know, for example, with, with UDOT, which is a state agency, yes, this is the alternative that we are going to champion now, but if you, other state agencies and federal agencies of EPA, Fish and Wildlife and, and such, could have a different opinion on why this is not their favorite and have some objections to it.
Is there more weight for the local view in your experience or is it going to be? I mean, in other words, if we really come out as a city, as, as councilman, what else can, you know, ask citizens to do? Is that going to carry more weight than somebody back in Washington DC?
Um, we, we by law can't allow it to carry weight in certain areas. I don't know if that makes sense. We, we, we try to account for that the best and the most we're allowed to, but there are some constraints and some things that, that by law could go against popular vote here in the community as well. Uh, I don't know, there's no real quantitative formula to weigh out how much, how much the community weighs in versus a, an environmental agency or, you know, it's, it gets really.
It depends on the type of impacts and how, how clearly they weigh out.
Yeah, and, and we, we hope that we've done most of that to get to this point. And at, at some point, the, the agencies realize that there's never a, a, clearly that they get everything they want either and that they recognize that there's some collaboration on the area as well and, and we hope that we, we work towards that end more.
Okay. Anybody else out there?
Well, I'm wondering your last statement. What, what are some of those things that could counter the local feeling on this?
Well, uh, that really starts getting down into the details and then probably, I can give you some generals here, but that's part of the reason we published the, the big book that's about this thick, because there really gets into a lot. But generally those things would be wetland impacts to natural resource, wetland impacts, Fish and Wildlife has, you know, their, things they're trying to protect. The EPA has issues with that as well. Historic, the historic structures, homes, buildings, things like that. So there could be a historical preservation impact that particularly is troublesome to somebody who wants to make a case against that. There's really no limit to, you know, anybody with any concern can, can make a comment saying, hey, what about this? Is this justified? And show them that there's no better way. And, and we have to address every single comment and concern that's officially received and show that this is the best fit. Doesn't mean that we have to grant everybody's request and, and certainly that we can't do that. But we have to be able to show that there's a good reason why we're, we're set, we're, some, a negative impact is going to be incurred because it's the best balance on the end.
Anybody? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, Linda, do you want me to cut you off?
Yeah, I gotta go.
Okay. Do you want to stay on the right of your council meeting or do you want to? You're welcome to if you want.
We'll get your map for another.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll get you the information. Yeah, we'll, we'll get you that information.
All right.
Goodbye. Well, we'll continue. We'll go, move on now to the consent agenda. So we're in regular council meeting now. Uh, we'll move on to the consent agenda, looking for a motion for the approval of the September 6th council meeting minutes.
Mayor Protam, I'll move that we approve the minutes, minutes of the September 6th council meeting.
Motion by Councilman Hardy. Second. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Okay, now we have the public forum, which anybody can come up to the mic and discuss and voice your opinion on anything if that's not on the agenda. If you do have something, please limit it to three minutes.
I'll do my best to keep it to three minutes. My name is Lee Johnson, live at 544 East 1100 South in Pace. Here was some concern over Gary's Meats and what's carrying on on the other side of us down in Hollow Park. Would like some information if it could be provided to us. I'd like to get the minutes from the agenda that was passed over two years ago by Larry Skinner, motioned it and everybody picked up their hands and said, okay. So I'm assuming that went into city ordinance probably five years ago over Gary's Meats not having any live animals on his property past five P M. I requested that from Jill. She was going to get that for me. Or still. Yeah. And then, uh, we're concerned on what's carrying on on the Hollow Park side of us. When they went in there and ripped all of the trees and brush down and opened all that up, it was just nothing but headache for us. It was nayvers to that, that now with intervention down there, it brings in hundreds of animals. So we're always watching. We had someone in there the other day stuck in the ditch, had to go pull him out. They did come up and took the fence off the gate up, so hopefully that will curb that.
Stuck in a vehicle or just fell in the ditch?
Drove his truck right in the ditch. So if the city's going to pursue with that park and whatever they're going to do down there, we would appreciate a create a big metal wall. Keep them on that side. And we'd appreciate, Jill, if we could get the records of that. And I know it's been a long time ago and see if that wording is what was said that night and see where we can go from there over Gary's Meats. And, uh, is there any ordinance about having animals in the front pasture? I know when we were here before talking about Gary's, he was not allowed to have animals in the pasture. He was allowed to have animals in the holding fence waiting to be killed. This individual's got cows and horses standing out there now. Is that permitted?
We'll have a review. We'll review it.
We'll come back in a couple of weeks and visit with you and see what we find out.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get in contact here. I'd like to know. I'd like to know. Can you, staff?
That's all I've got to say. Thanks.
I didn't, I didn't know about that, so. Yes, well, I don't remember.
Thanks, man.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public forum. Onto council and staff reports. We'll start with staff.
Uh, Mayor Protam and Council, just a reminder that the pressure irrigation water will go off on the 29th of this month, so the island water gets shut off, so we don't have an option. That's the only way we can sustain it, so just, we put notices out, it got put on Facebook, it got put on the dialer. I think it's on our website, so we've put it everywhere we can, but I just wanted to remind you that that was covered in case you get some phone calls.
Do we have a question for you Travis? Did we end up using more than we projected during the course of the summer from, to be from the high line? From the canal or about what we thought or?
It was about what we thought. I mean, we didn't get a lot of rain, obviously, so we were, our usage never went down, but we, we didn't go over our allotment or anything, so we're good there. so we're good there. But yeah, they, I mean, once they shut the canal off, we don't have an option, we keep our system online, so that is what it is.
So, then you'll, this drainage ponds out, be done?
Yeah, so the, I'm sure the residents, because it, it goes off, the Highline called, they're, they're actually shutting it off at six a.m. on the twenty-ninth, so by the thirtieth, I'm guessing they'll be pretty empty and done, but, so, we'll just see how fast it gets raining, we'll drain the pipes, so we can clear out.
Anybody else?
Mayor Protem and Council, good to be here. Just to let you know, um, I know sometimes you get contacted about open burning, that started on the fifteenth of, so, September, and it'll go till the end of October, so another fun for you, we get a deal with that.
Clarification on open burning, if they can't burn grass, right?
No, no grass, no leaves, no household garbage, it's gotta be yard waste, like limbs and shrubs and things like that. The caveat with that is if we get a call on it, we'll come check it, if they're burning things that are illegal, we'll put it out, and if we have issues, they won't issue a citation. If it's objectionable to the neighbors of smoking them out as well, we'll put the fire out. They used to have to get online to fill out the application, we don't charge, there's quite a few departments that charge, it's still just a free application to put in there to get the information, so we know who's burning, what location and times and dates. Also, we're, uh, doing some training this week, required by the state of Utah for our medical, um, to do defensive driving or emergency vehicle operations yearly because of the accidents they had up north a few years ago. So, we're providing training, um, halls on the state fire prevention board, and we purchased two different semi-trailers with emergency vehicle simulators, so we're doing those this week. So, lot started last night and go all the way through Saturday, so they do that training and have big simulators to go in there and drive and practice and have different scenarios they've brought, just some kind of fun thing, but staying busy as usual, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Mayor Protem and Council and Public, just wanted to report a few things from the Recreation Department. We did have Travis let us know as well, last night, we had a leak, somebody ran over a glass valve on our soccer fields that cleans out, uh, the pipes there, so we got that fixed today, water off last night. We are taking registrations for, um, youth wrestling now, as well as, uh, women's volleyball will be started shortly on that, our youth flag football program will be starting this next week, and our youth soccer is, uh, wrapping up for our recreation leagues, uh, this weekend, next week, so we wrapping those up. And that's what we have going now, so Public, we want for you to sign up to wrestle if you're young enough and coach if you're older, that'd be great. Thank you.
Hey, I have a question for you real quick. And I probably should ask this at some other point in time, but since you're here, um, I had a lot of people ask about those little pocket parks, lots of dead spots that have shown up over the summer, and they're claiming, this probably isn't the best place to, but they're claiming that it's because heads are broken or whatever, and they're concerned that the people who are mowing the lawn never say anything, they just get deader and deader. Do we have a, the ability to report back on those dead spots and?
We should, I'll follow on that, I'll talk with, uh, Mark Thailand as well, and the Mo crew there.
Yeah, I just wanna ask them if they see something to be proactive, and, and they may be, like, I don't, I don't know.
Well, sometimes it's, as a mower, if they hit it, they'll maybe notice, but if they don't, you would.
Oh, you mean like after three weeks, it's getting more and more yellow each time, like, hopefully they're proactive enough and they're.
That'd be great.
They're going to say, hey, you might wanna look at this.
Good, thank you.
Uh, just a couple things to bring up, Council is, uh, and these are things that maybe you don't need a decision now, but, uh, get you to think about it, uh, Mayor Moore talked with, um, Sarge Barnett, he's wanting to do a, a Halloween dance petit, um, bring in his brass band and, and sell tickets. We feel like it might be a little late to get things out and advertised, and there's a lot of work that has to be done, but I think he's going to meet with Mr. Barnett Monday with Janine, we've, uh, anyway, it's gonna cost us a little bit to, to hire the band, but I think, uh, the mayor felt like the, the funds were okay, but there's just a lot of other logistics, but I don't know if you're in favor of something like that, trying to, he'd like to do something during the Halloween time for the community.
It's a brass band, by the way.
Yeah, it's a big band, it's a big band.
Actually, a lot of people talk to me about having a Halloween dance of some sort in petite, it's kind of a cool, it's an old building, so it could fit the whole Halloween theme a little bit, and, and there's, I wanna say that Halloween is the second most, uh, it's my, second highest revenue producing holiday now, with an increase in adults who are dressing up more and more in one of your parties, I don't know, I think it would be good, I don't know how much it costs.
Was it five hundred or?
I think he talked to Sarge and Sarge was okay to accept three hundred and fifty, but he doesn't wanna charge tickets, and so we have to see, we have to just get the word out, and there's decorations, there's other expenses that we have to put into it.
Does want to charge?
Yeah, he wants to charge, uh, to, to have the event for people to buy tickets.
So, Janine, what's your opinion on that?
I'd, I'd pick up the difference in the donation if he wouldn't charge.
Just up the donation a little bit, or the?
I'd, I would, oh, donation if he wouldn't charge, I just think.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe charging, free city space, I, I have a hard time with that.
Okay, I'll pass that on to Mayor, maybe you can bump that up a little and just have it as a free.
There, there are, I think, quite a few members in the community that would probably be willing to help, if you reach out, I, you know, I know a few that I can reach out to, be willing to be involved, to get some community, kind of, support.
A couple other things, um, I, I sent you all an email, we have a consultant that, well, we have a person that wants to be our consultant back in Washington DC to help with some federal funding, um, I don't know what your thoughts are, if you're, uh, it seems a little bit pricey, uh, maybe it's something we could do in the future, because I think there are probably some federal grants or loans or funds that we're probably missing out on, but, uh, I don't know if you wanna weigh in or you can email me, and I, you know, I just hope the individual that I, uh, bring it up to, to the council and let them weigh in a little bit before we.
I don't, I was probably discussing this, but.
I, I was pretty happy to for a, um, commission-based consultant, you bring in the funds that meets our needs, and we'll pay a percentage of that.
I don't think you can do that. If you're getting federal funds, I don't think you can do it on a commission basis like that.
Are there other sources, regional councils here in the state that?
And there's some state funding, this is off federal, uh, probably within a two-week period, I don't know, I've probably received.
I guess I'd just like to know what, what comes with it.
How long does it take to get a grant through, so if it's a six-month process, to get a grant through, that's, that's a lot of money.
And I can reach out.
I can reach out Salt Lake County, 'cause I think they've used this company before, and see what their experience is and.
I would be interested in using whatever resources we have to, to improve infrastructure and, and whatever, um, that needs to work for us.
Okay.
Dave, on that, um, we have an appointment with UVU on, with their grant writer program, so I think we ought to look at that first and see what they can do for us before we spend this kind of money.
And I talked to them, maybe we focus on state funding instead of federal, you know, this go around, and then maybe let's see what we can do, so, just wanted to throw it out for your opinion. And then the last thing, we've had, when we have these wonderful storms and get some flooding in certain areas, uh, part of the, part of the issue is the lack of curb and gutter, and I know, uh, Councilman Phillips and I, uh, looked at a couple of areas, and Scott's been proactive with that. Several years ago, fifteen or more years ago, we, uh, implemented a little program where we would upfront the cost to put the curb gutter sidewalk in, we put a trustee on their house, and then they could pay a, a very small amount, monthly amount, maybe twenty-five dollars a month, and when that's paid off, then we would release that, and that would help with some of these storm drain issues, and so, I know Scott talked to the one in one area, and they seemed somewhat positive on maybe participating in that. I wanted to throw it out here and say it's not something you could approve in a formal meeting, but if you're in favor of some of that concept with some of these harder areas, we'd have to have some criteria, but we would, we would, uh, for lack of better word, we'd be the bank on some of these small projects, and then allow them the opportunity to pay it back over, you know, four or five year period of time, and work on that, so I, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, or if you wanna think about it.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea, I know Councilman Phillips and I have talked about it, you know, we did some drainage up on six hundred east, and I can remember coming home three years ago and said about this time of the year when we had that big storm and saw the flooding, whereas this time, because we had curb and gutter, a lot of those issues have gone away, and there was very little, and there's a lot of the same, you know, a lot of rain at the same time, so, my point is, yeah, I think we definitely should look at doing a program like this.
Okay, we'll pursue that a little bit, and just to let you know, we are still continuing, we, uh, had some engineers on the school district property to do some tests to see if that area would be feasible, we, 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 we really need to finish up the regional, put a pond out there west of Utah property that we purchased a few years ago, and get the piping up to the Tater School, and then, then help this area, the old part of town's probably the worst part, so, uh, we are working on that, it's not an easy, you know, weak fix, but we're also looking at some of the current challenges and see if we can resolve some of those, so, we'll pursue that a little bit with some of the, the harder areas where there's no curb and gutter, and see if we can get some of that fixed.
So, do we know where we're at on, like, eight thirty west, they're right across the street from the ballpark drainage area, and they get flooded every time it rains, in the eight hundred south and eight thirty west.
Well, it's because.
Is it because they're on the wrong side?
Are you talking about?
Mark Bigra? What? From Mark Bigra?
I don't know.
Well, it was just, I don't know, he's only third.
Craig, Craighead, the Craigheads, uh.
Oh wait, I'm on seven eighty.
I don't know. It's straight across, almost straight across from the big.
Retention basin.
When you say straight across, you're talking.
South side, across, across eight hundred south to the south. So there's a big retention basin and, and they flood almost every time it rains, and they're right there, so I don't know if they're on the wrong side of that.
Or the pipe should go.
Or if it's not getting cleaned out, or, I don't know, I don't.
Yeah, and we, and there's pipe there, we, we do use some of that area, and, uh, but we, we exchanged that road several years ago with UDOT, and so like when Big O Tire went in.
That road, you mean eight hundred south?
Yeah, eight hundred south, so when eight, when Big O went in, they had designed to put, uh, put their storm water in that system, and, uh, UDOT said, no, that's our system now, you can't put it in there, so we, we've had some continued dialogue with UDOT to say, you know, that, that's been a, a major part of our storm drain system, and, uh, you know, if, if they're gonna take ownership and not let any other people put in there, then they better maintain it.
Right.
And so, we, we've had ongoing discussions with their director, Region Three, but, uh, we'll look at that area at eight south.
Okay.
See if we can do something there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Travis? Nothing?
We've never had a complaint in our, that I've received.
No, I didn't, I'm not. For something to say.
I already did.
Well, there, there is one of the, the problems, another pitch out there for residents is, I see a lot of stuff that goes on, on Facebook and other places, and they complain, but they never ask people who can answer their questions, and so, like, this person, he's actually a, a friend, and he gets up and he puts it all out there, but, yeah, if you don't call into the city, like, the city is a huge area for us to know every single pothole and every single storm drain issue, like, I don't know if you wanna pay for that many people to be out on the streets all the time to, to see everything, but, but a call in to, to council member, a call in to the city to dispatch, I mean, those are things that we can look at and we can be made aware of it, but it's really hard to know every last square inch of the city and what's happening at any given time, so.
Like the one, the seven eighty flood, was that the problem there, it was some garbage from up the street come down and clogged the inlet.
Yeah.
But you couldn't see it 'cause the water was too deep.
Right.
Just, you know, 'cause the lake was the first, and knocked over some of these garbage cans, so, you know, so.
So staff's been really good to, to do what they can, but there, there are limitations, and so if you help us out, like, like this issue, if it never has come to their attention, they don't know to focus their attention on that storm drain issue.
Anybody else? Okay, Councilman Hardy?
Uh, just a couple of things, um, and I'm sure Councilman Hewlett will cover this in greater depth, but, uh, was part of the Payson's Open for Business activity at the golf course, thing went real well, and we had a lot of good comments, and I'll let Councilman Hewlett elaborate on all that. Last movie of the summer for the chamber got rained out, it was good we got the rain, but it's sad that it got rained out, it's over to Santa Claus, so they didn't have that. Chamber also had a marketing for a small business, which I attended here in the council chambers, I thought that went very well. Chamber does provide a lot of opportunities to businesses to do thi, to learn things or do things that, uh, they normally would have to pay some huge amount of money for, so I thought that, that went very well. Last item is the Great Pumpkin Hunt, which will be coming up next month, and, uh, you'll see a lot of, uh, information coming out from the chamber on that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Doug?
Yeah, I just, I, unfortunately, I wasn't able to go to the golf tournament, but even though I didn't go, I heard a lot of really good feedback, good messaging, just businesses in general, that Payson is open for business, and we're going to continue to plan and make sure that, that growth reflects Payson as much as possible, but we're actively pursuing business and growth in a responsible way, and so I appreciate Councilman Hewlett and everybody involved in putting that together, um, really good. Glad to finally have something on I-15, I guess that's already been covered, but that's, it's a really good step to, to move forward and, and know what we're doing with our town. And then just another shout out, um, thankful for all of our staff in general, they always do a good job, they work really hard, um, and when they don't, I think there's, there's good conversations that happen behind the scenes that not everybody sees to make sure that it doesn't happen again, but also, um, uh, there's a press with, with Scott Phillips, not everybody, or Councilman Phillips, not everybody has the time to do this, but we had a citizen that had an issue, and he went out there and did his very best to help and do work to make, to solve the problem, and I'll wait for someone else to do it, and I think that's, that's, that's what a community really is, when people come together and they help each other. So, thank you.
I just have a couple of things, one is, um, just to report back on, on UVU, the last I heard is that, um, they have money in escrow now to purchase that, um, property in Payson, so it looks like that's moving along. Um, just the golf event that we had is, uh, we had a kind of a double meeting, open, we had Payson Open, which is a golf term, and then we had Open for Business, and I'll, I'll, Dave's giving some hats, and I'll have to show you the hats that we gave out to everybody, and I'll give some to councilmen's that weren't there, um, but, anyway, we had a good event, we had about seventy-eight people there, I think seventy-eight, five golfers, and they had some very good comments, um, we had, like, Mountview Hospital, UVU, we had two of the county commissioners, we had Mark Roberts, we had EDC Utah, arrived homes, edge homes, destination homes, so we had a lot of, uh, people there that we wanted to be there to show off Payson to, and I, and I'd like to thank the, the planning and zoning, I had heard a lot of good comments, when you had the map up there showing things going on in Payson, people were really surprised, so, thank you very much, and thank Tracy for the, the help that he did on that. Okay, well, we had, we're gonna get some hats, but they're, they're so valuable, they're in the vault locked up, so. And then Doug invited, uh, Deanne Hewes from the, um, from the Utah Valley Home Builders, and here's a, here's a, uh, email that we got from her, and it says, "Thank you for the enjoyable day at Gladstand yesterday, your whole sponsors were great and had a lot of information about development and, uh, present economic factors in Payson, this is a brilliant idea to gather together those in the building community to learn more about Payson and opportunities there, it was nice to visit with your staff and get to know them better." Uh, they had, and then they just said they had a great time, so, we had a lot of good, uh, positive comments, I think it's money well spent, um, to showcase Payson, and we wanna continue to do this as an annual event, so, that's all I have, thanks.
Okay.
I just have a couple things, just.
Dave, go. You want the ball?
Anyway, I just wanna say thanks for all the help, you know, I wouldn't have known about the little issue, had you not seen it on Facebook until today, 'cause I don't get it, still.
So I appreciate you forwarding the complaints on, so we can go address them.
And what's that, I've met with Jesse, he's been in the storm drain, and he thinks it's a great idea, so I hope, you know, I don't think it's probably the best idea. You know, I don't think it's probably the best idea to just go do one house in the middle of a block. I think that was a great problem, but. We can convince the, maybe the whole block to do it. If it would be going to be out angry, then we can move forward that way. But. And I want to thank Brian for all his hard work on that. The open, business open. I think it was well received. Just want to say thanks. Thanks to staff for. And Travis, thanks for always answering them comments as quick as you do. Yeah, I know it's even on the weekends. Thanks for answering them. That's all I have.
Nice to thank back.
You bet.
So here, here's a hat that we have and you can look at them after, but it just says, uh, Payson City Open and then Open for, uh, for Business. So it had the two meetings. So we'll get one of the.
It's got, so you guys can wear these around.
Thank you.
I was amazed pretty at the quality of comments that we had that were very, very complimentary.
Sorry, I wasn't there. I was out. Okay, now, uh, Councilman Hewlett's volunteered to do our scout attendance certificate. So, uh, he'll go to the mic and call you guys his name. He'll come up, get your certificate and then walk across the front of the council stage here and take your hands.
Now what I'm going to have you do is just come up and line up. And we have kind of tradition now is that, and Linda, Councilman Carter started this. Is that you tell something that you like about scouting. So, so call your names. You come up, grab your certificate and then just stand here in line. So the first one is Benjamin Merrill.
Good looking troop by the way. It's a good looking troop by the way.
It is.
Wes is a leader.
Oh, Wes is a leader. Okay. We'll give you a certificate if you want one. There you go. Thank you. And just like that right over here. Just a second.
Just standing right here. We're going to have you all line up and then you can come.
Go down one that way and then we'll just have to come like that. Okay, Kyle Dalton. Luke Weaver. Justin Cook. Nathan Nelson. Brendan Bailey. Remkin Kate Carmen. McKay Carmen. Benjamin Bagley. And Zachary Peterson. Okay, Zachary, since you're last, we're going to have you start. Just, uh, turn around and speak real loud and tell them what you, something you like about scouting.
Camping.
Camping, okay.
Physical activity. Yeah, camping.
Fun activities we do. Getting merit badges. Learning new stuff.
Be outdoors.
Nice. Getting merit badges. Learning life skills.
All right, thank you. Now if you're just going to turn around, I'd love you to walk around. Take care of these councilmen.
Can you look like you're one step away from an eagle?
Thanks, Councilman Hewlett, for doing that. Okay, discussion review regarding the salmon supper, Janine?
Thank you for letting me take a few minutes. I wish my voice was stronger, but it's not. So anyway, so, um. I've been doing the salmon supper now for four years. And I, it was pretty set in stone before I even came. The city really already had a great handle on it. From fish to volunteers. Even when I started, the volunteers had already called and said they'd done it for years. So really for me, I, I just feel like I'm still. Just a small piece of putting the salmon supper together. I kind of just helped make it happen. Because the community and you guys and the city has done it for years. So, um, just as I have done it the last four years, um, I think we're maxed out on being able to handle the fish. How much fish we can sell. I've talked to Chief Spencer about this and we really are maxed where we're going to be on that. So I think we're good with fish. I think we're good how it comes off the, how it comes off the fire. Um, I think we're good with our volunteers, how it's set up, the tables, um, moving around. I think all that is perfect. The only thing I think that would help make this event even more successful is the lines. And I think we can all agree on that. My first year, the line wait was probably an hour and fifteen minutes. My second year, I was so lucky, wait time was thirty-five minutes. Don't ask me how that even happened. Because I did the same thing. No, it was a good year, but so was last year. No rain inside. So I thought, kind of held my head a little high thinking. I've got this mastered. No. Next year was two hour wait. Last year, two hour wait. That's just too long. And to be honest, I literally go crazy. The day of, the day before, just wondering, I've got this huge group of people coming. I'm responsible to make sure those who bought tickets, those who are standing in line, the fish on the truck. All my volunteers, is it all going to work? And I, you have all seen me that night and I'm a little crazy. Especially when you all start coming up and going, do we have enough fish? Do we have enough fish? Do we have enough? I mean, it's just like, I don't know. We'll have to just wait and see. And at the very end I say, yes. Yes, we do. So, but so for the sake of me, so I don't go crazy, and I think to be more professional. This is our biggie gift. This is our rodeo, you can say. This is what we're famous for. And I think it's time that we have our ticket sales online. I want you guys to tell me, where do you think most of our ticket sales come from? Regis and Mike, where do you think most of our ticket sales come from?
At the park.
At the park, Mike?
I know there's a, yeah, you're talking about the source where geographically they're from?
Yeah, so we sell them at the park. We sell them through online. We sell them through banks. We sell them at the city office. Payson Market and the library. Those are all the places we sell tickets.
I, I know we have an individual that walks into our bank regularly every year and buys thousands of dollars worth of tickets that he gives away. So in one way, I wouldn't want to see it go to just be online because unless you're not going to, you're going to have some way of. Uh, what I'm looking for. If you're talking about not having any more than, you know, over capacity right now.
Right.
How are we being, how are we going to partition the sales of those tickets? Are we not going to allow somebody to come in and buy twenty-four hundred dollars worth of tickets?
So what I want to do, in fact, um, Trevor's here from Edge Ticks. So if we have questions, yes, come on. So he has been wonderful to work with. And so. If you, I guess, let me finish my little spiel first. Um, Brian, where do you think most of the ticket sales come from?
Uh, I'd probably say at the park.
I know what's crazy. I, I'm going to just give you this. And you're right, most of the ticket sales come from the park. Which I, it surprised me. It's not bad. So, so that day when I'm answering phone calls, I get a ton of phone calls. I am, I can't even work. And do what I'm supposed to, because I'm literally on the phone all day long with the same question. Um, can I go? And I have to actually, I had Trevor turn off the tickets at three because it is so. There's no exact number for me. So at three o'clock, I know at the park, I'll take, Trevor will tell me how many tickets are sold. I'll take those away and then we just have tickets at the park. So if I could, I think ninety percent of those people at the park, if they knew, and if I just had an answering thing saying, buy your tickets online. I'm pretty sure, I think most people do their business online now. Um, I am confident that this would work. I would, I would have to advertise way in advance. I mean, I'm thinking March, start advertising that these tickets would be sold online and also at the city. So if you don't feel comfortable using the computer, you would come into the city and buy your ticket. Those who mail in their tickets, you know, when I, uh, they'll send me a check and they'll write their name and address with a self, self-addressed out demo. I would do those the same, because I would get online, buy their tickets. The only thing that's going to change, that's going to make this successful, is putting times on the tickets. At first I was thinking every hour. So like, for instance, down at the bottom, and this is guesses, until I can get with Trevor and pinpoint. He's the professional of this. He's done MiFID Derby. He's done, and he already has a lot of good advice ready. That I've already asked him, a ton of questions. And he's ready to go with how to lighten those up from sponsors, volunteers. Those I know have to, mayors would be different. I would give them option of, um, going online if they're interested. So I don't have two hundred tickets out there floating going, are they going to come? Are they not going to come? This way they actually go online if they're interested in coming and they print their own ticket. So, um, what am I going to? I think I would do it actually every half hour instead. And I would, because I can serve one thousand one hundred people every hour. We've got that pretty mastered. So I think if I can, from the edge of the tickets to the edge of where we get our food at the tables. To the ticket booth, that holds five hundred people. So if I can work in five hundred increments and then have a queue, is that what it's called? A waiting area? For, and then we just show, you know, like boarding a plane, I could get on a plane.
Or a craft bear.
No, no, don't listen to him. Anyway, so I think I could definitely, that way people can just wander. They can listen to entertainment. And they know exactly when their time is coming. And then they'll say on their tickets, you know, we're now, we're now boarding. We're eating by three to six. And then that time period will come up and be served. And I know it's an amount of people. Gee, I mean, Chief Spencer will know it's amount of people going from time to time. To me, it makes sense. So Trevor, did you want to add anything?
Um, I think the only thing is, you guys have a really good problem where there are a lot of people going. So. That drives a lot of things where, I don't think you need to even advertise too much because you get the word out there, it's going to spread. People know they're going to line. We can set up the time slot, makes it really easy. We've got scanners and hardware to be able to accommodate print off tickets. And even their mobile phones, that's obviously a big movement right now.
Yeah.
And, um, we can take care of anyone that wants to go into a place. I feel like we should try to center our rack in one or two locations. So it doesn't get crazy. I can come down and train those people. Um, that way people can come in, they can pay with cash. If there's a big purchaser, like paying twenty-four hundred bucks for tickets. Um, they're not going to charge a fee for our system or anything at any point of sale, sales. There's no fee charged through our system. So. Makes it really easy. Keep trying to buy our tickets and manage that line a little bit there. It's a little crazy.
Totally.
So I've got a couple of questions. How do you get the fifteen hundred people who are buying at the park? To switch over? Because you've got fifteen people who are accustomed to showing up at the park.
And I don't know if they're accustomed to. I think these people don't know they're going until that night.
I agree.
And so if they're busy, they don't know for sure what their schedule is, so they decide to go that night. And a lot of my conversation on the phone with these people, which I would change, not just have a recording, to be honest, so I can do my job. Um, would be, um, if you do decide to buy online, buy online before three. Because since I have to manually count all these tickets, I need to have it count by three at the park. And so that's where you get most of your people coming.
I actually don't think you need to do that anymore.
I wouldn't. I, yeah, because that's my crazy part.
Right.
I, I wouldn't do. I would, my online thing would just be, you know.
So the person who shows up to the park, what do they do?
Point of sale at five.
It's just a regular point of sale. Okay.
Yeah, so.
So you'll still sell actual tickets for?
Yeah, so down at the bottom, I've kind of guessed, this first year, I think we'll go at this lunchtime online. And then I'll give Trista like so many tickets between four and five, between five and six. And so she'll also have those time tickets also. We're going to have to learn as we go, but I really think this is the future to be successful.
So maybe, I want to say catch on the time slot, maybe they'll come buy their tickets and then go do something else or mingle in the park or whatever.
I think the first year might be a little bit hectic, but I think, I think if you get the time slots. I think you're going to cut down on that line around the tennis courts of almost Dixon's, past Dixon's house.
Because they know they could, they don't have to stand there. They go, go do something, come back.
Yeah, they're telling them not to be.
Wait a certain half hour. An hour and a half.
Right.
I think it might be good. The, the first year might be a little hectic, but we tried accommodation.
And Trevor's so good to work with. I, I mean, I'm, I am a little nervous because this is just really new. But, um, with his support and his knowledge and his ideas, I feel much more comfortable. And, um, I'm actually excited. I hope you look, um, like the idea too. I think it's something you should try.
One, one thing I think that would encourage people to go online is, is that if you buy them at the park, it's going to cost you more money. Because, because usually when you buy last thing, it costs you more money because we can't plan for it. So I think we ought to do something along that line.
Or you may not get your time slot yet.
All right. I agree. I think that goes back to that, you got a great problem. We have a sellout event.
Yeah.
So you can really kind of dictate.
Well, and we'll have real tiny information on how many tickets we've sold.
Oh.
That's been one of our problems in the past, because you have several banks, you have the people that sell it.
Yeah, we have no idea.
You don't have an accurate count of who's, how many has been sold.
On that paper though, it's pretty like cash value. So that's, the total number of tickets is four thousand seven hundred and six. And that's what our revenue was. And then I broke it down to where it was sold. And then including our volunteers and our sponsors and our basically free tickets is close to two hundred. So that takes you to four thousand nine hundred and six, which our max goal is five thousand. So we've done that for the last four years.
Yeah, if I might, if I might make a couple of comments here. I had a call from a gentleman who said, you guys are, your portions are way too high and you should charge more. Which sounds kind of funny, but that's what we're known for, is big portions. I mean, it, it, when you're out there cutting and serving that fish.
Right.
It's amazing that there were people that are just all, oh, you're so grateful that they're getting a big piece of fish. And that they, they're going to probably eat it for the next two weeks. So, and that's what we did at my house. Because we had a lot of leftover fish from the people that came. So I think we have a great event. And the only thing that's ever bothered me, which it sounds like we may have a solution to, is my eighty-year-old mother-in-law standing in line for two and a half hours. And that happened one time because I was with her an hour of that after I had served, uh, up until six o'clock. When we were standing out there and, and she's never come back. And I'd hate to see us have an accident or a problem because somebody passes out. And, you know, we get a lot of the seniors ahead of time and, and maybe we need to figure out a way to maybe take some of those seniors. That would come later and help them out. But.
Yes.
I think this is a very good solution in the long run to help us maybe manage that wait in line. Because I think that is the one bad thing about that.
I have one question. So on the bottom one on the fish sales, would, could you or would you pre-sell them also?
Well, pre-sell?
Because I, I, that's what I do. I love to buy at least a slab or two and take them.
Yeah, we can set up an option to purchase additional.
I guess my, my issue is I want to know I can get one.
Right, right. And not just wait to see what we have left over.
Yeah, I think, I think you'd have, I know I would do it. I would buy some. In fact, I did that one year as I bought some.
I think, I think just in our discussion, in our staff meeting discussions, is we just didn't want to become a fish selling. We're doing it for the dinner part of it. And so that was our only, we didn't want to, we don't want to put that out there too much. Because we don't, we're not out to sell fish. We want them to stay.
Are you talking about it being cooked or raw?
Yeah, well, we'd sell either one at the end. But this is always at the end, whatever we have left.
But we could look at something like that. One of the things we.
Well, I don't care if you limit it. If you want to limit it, I don't have a problem. I'd like to have the opportunity to buy the ticket.
And I think other people would too, definitely.
One of the things we talk about that's always a headache for Janine is she does, she gets a lot of people about seven thirty. Saying we're going to run out of fish because you're looking at that big line. And so we talked about, look, if, if we do the online ticket sales. We know that we're not going to sell more than five thousand tickets. We just know that. So we order, this, this year we ordered fifty-two hundred. I said, let's order fifty-four hundred pounds. And we know we're going to have enough fish, no matter what, because we know there's not going to be more than five thousand.
But just mentally looking at that. Just mentally looking at that line, it's very deceiving. And when the people see me, I physically walk the whole line. I probably walked it three times, either counting or asking, did you buy your ticket? Did you buy your ticket? Did you buy your ticket? And they're like, is there gonna be enough food? I mean, you look pretty stressed. And I'm going, no, there's plenty. Did you buy your ticket? Did you buy your ticket? I mean, I, it's, I just, I had to know. I, you know, and I kept talking to Chief Spencer, making sure we're on the same page with how much fish. And so it's exhausting.
And then every year, they come to those that are serving, saying, you gotta cut down their portions because we're gonna run out of fish. And it's like, this is a band for the people to get a nice piece of fish. They don't care about the coleslaw or about the corn or the baked potato. It's like, we want the salmon. So I don't, I'm not interested in cutting down the portions.
And I agree. That's one thing that makes this such a great event.
But it seems like every year, they come into the tent and say, oh, you gotta cut it down because we're gonna run out of fish. And so if we know that through the online sales that there's not gonna be more than five thousand tickets, and we have fifty-four hundred pounds of salmon, we're not gonna run out. And we know that, and we just move forward. So it's, it's not a stressful thing like it has been every year.
Well, so what do you want? I'd be up with that.
Oh, good. I just want you to tell me yes.
I, I guess what we'd like to do...
It's work in progress. It's worked in progress.
If you're okay, we'd like to do the online this year and the time slots.
I would say go and do.
You know what? Steve, will we have to tweak it after that?
I think we would too, so.
I, I have one thing to add, and I'm gonna get under my desk as I do this. I put my economic development hat on, and this is our rodeo, like you said. Rodeos usually last for three or four days. You bring people into town, and, and you, you have them stay there, you, you develop something. So I, that's where I get under the desk. If we look at this as a two-day event, and I know as a volunteers, it's gonna be really tough. Maybe you have to hire people to do it. But if you hire people to do it, but you get people to stay here, you have a salmon running on the Saturday, and a few things like that, and make it a weekend, instead of people coming into town, spending their sixteen dollars and leaving town. And, and so anyway, something to think about. I'm not saying we have to do it, but we oughta, we oughta think about it. And, and I don't wanna put all on the volunteers, because we can make enough money to cover, to pay people to do this. But then we, because at rodeos, they pay to have people do it. And so then we can make it a, a weekend event instead of a four-hour event. Anyway, just something to think about.
Scares me a little bit.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, you better get on your... So are you guys okay making a motion that we go with the online sales?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we adopt this strategy that's been outlined.
Do you have a motion by Councilman Hardy?
I'll second that.
Is that one by Councilman Hewitt? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, pause. Motion carries. Thanks, Janine. Okay. Food Pantry Memorial Park, I'm not sure who that is.
Erin McQuirby's here. She came last meeting and presented this, and we can talk more about it. I'll let her present, you know, any additional information she has, and then we can, we can discuss it.
I don't really necessarily have much more information than I had last time. I did also, though, wanna start just by saying thank you for hearing me out on this. This is only the second city council meeting I've ever attended in my whole life. The first one was last time when I came to propose this. So thank you so much for your consideration. This is way out of my comfort zone, so I apologize for any nervousness or inexperience. But, um, yeah, I, I wanna create a little food pantry in the park, in Memorial Park. I would take on the cost of building it and stocking it and all of those things. I'm just seeking permission for it to be there. I've talked to a lot of friends and family members that have all talked about contributing to keeping it stocked. And it would just be stocked organically, you know, stop buying your way home from the grocery store and put some things in it. It would be a take what you need, leave what you can sort of a mentality. I, I understand that we already have a couple of, you know, formal food pantries in town. This isn't meant to be another one. It's just kind of a different thing. It's more casual and it's more anonymous and informal and just kind of a neighbors helping each other out sort of a thing. I understand there are liability concerns. I think you looked at, right? Anyway, um, I guess that's why I'm here, because I know that there, there are concerns about that. What, what questions do you guys have? What concerns do you have?
My first question is, why Memorial Park?
So I drove around town a little bit, and I drove around at night, and Memorial Park is well-lit. And that corner of it where I wanna put it has a couple of parking spots. So it'd be a good, an easy place to pull over and park and either stock some things or take some things out. Um, I also feel like it's really centrally located, um, and it's on a, not on a busy street. So if you were gonna pull over or something, there's not traffic to worry about hitting you.
So where's that spot that you're talking about?
I'm talking about the northwest corner. So it would be, I wrote it down.
Isn't it Main Street?
Right. So on Main Street, and I think it's second, so across the street from like the church that's there.
Okay, so Dave, I have a question. What kind of liability issues would we be facing? You know, if somebody decides they're gonna pull a prank and they put something in there with a poison?
Well, and Erin pointed this out to us in the, in our insurance company, Ford of the Utah statute. There, there is some limitation on liability for, it's kind of like the Good Samaritan law, put that in. Our insurance company was concerned on a risk management position of just having that very thought or somebody that may do something in a not a very nice way, and, and having some claims. I think, I think there are some statutes that could limit it somewhat. What our insurance company, you know, backed is, you know, municipalities normally are not in the pantry or food type business. There's, there's coalitions that do that. Like I say, the Catholic Church has one, the Agape has a help. We have our interfaith council with the different religions that meets with the mayor. They, they have things that help people that are in need. And so there are, there are organizations that do that. Our, our parks people are just concerned about having that in the park and just the maintenance. And I think Erin would do a good job of that. I'm not trying to dissuade her. Those that we saw, I looked on the website that she sent me as well, a lot of those that I could see, and you can't, you just see the pictures, a lot of them seem to be in, you know, storefronts where people keep an eye on it, or houses or something like that. So the park makes us a little nervous. I, I just wanna let you know what the parks people are saying, but...
Well, it makes me nervous too. I'm, I'm not against what you're wanting to do.
No.
I can see it being a problem when you, you move out of the neighborhood, out of the city, or something happens. And, and then it does, it kind of becomes abandoned, and then we've got that in our park.
I don't, I didn't think of that. I mean, I'm planning to live in the community for a long time, but yeah, you never know. And who knows, you know, maybe in twenty years or something, if I move, I'll go take it down or whatever. My, my plan is to stop by and check on it every day, or, you know, have neighbors of mine, you know, pitch in and do the same. But yeah, I mean, it is a park. You never, never know about vandalism or whatever. So that's a concern I have as well.
See, if we were to do this, I'd almost see, rather see it done down here.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I'm not a big fan of it, to be honest with you. I'm, I'm all for helping people out, and I don't wanna seem as cold or un caring, but I, I'm all for helping people out. We have a lot of, of good avenues for people to use. I see Rio Grande happening, Salt Lake City, things like that. And so I'm all for helping people, but if we did it, I would much rather put it down on this corner, close to where our police station is. And then that way, they did good relationships with people, and they can know where to go for help as well, too. But I, we've got a big grassy area out here. They can pull off the side of the road right here. I would be much more open to that.
I'm not married to the location as much as I am to the concept, so.
And then, I like helping people. It's, I would probably go about personally in a different way as, as far as distributing it. But I like, I like that you're involved, and I like that you're caring, so.
Yeah, I'd like to just thank you for being involved and trying to do something to help people. I do have a couple of questions on wintertime or hot summertime, and if you're gonna have freezing, if you have anything as cans or anything that's not just dry goods that's gonna freeze.
Right. So I, I had planned to put some sort of notice inside of it saying, you know, no perishables, no refrigerated or frozen things or whatever. And then, yeah, that would be where checking on it frequently would come into play, you know, if cans are bolting or something, you need to throw them out and things like that. As far as the, the thing itself, we're gonna shingle it on top and use, you know, exterior paint. You know, try and make it kind of somewhat weatherproof. But yeah, weather extremes would, would come into play a little bit.
And I, I, I think that Memorial Park's probably the wrong place for this. Again, I think we don't really have something here, Dave, with the city, that they bring stuff in, or?
Well, at times, we'll have some food drives, but we don't have a specific thing like that. Like I say, the interfaith council meets their monthly. They, they had fundraisers to try to provide for those in need and help people that come to them. But we don't have anything that Erin's proposing in the community. What we do have on the block is, is have a way to pull like sheet box.
Oh, you have sheet boxes?
Yeah. Anyway, what other questions you guys have, or?
What do you wanna do? Does motion deny approve?
I have a question for our chief. What do you think about something like this, especially if we add it closer to the police department? What, what's your opinion?
Well, I'll start off by saying I think it's a great idea, and I think it's needed in our, in our community. I guess my only concern is the clientele that it brings close to our office. I would feel more comfortable having it on this side of the building rather than our side, personally. But with that said, I, I don't see a huge problem with it, other than, you know, that some of the people are gonna come and take most of it, probably.
Can we review it on a yearly basis, or?
Maybe a trial period, and see how it goes.
That's what Mark just said, maybe, maybe five or six months, if you're inclined down in this area and see, then review it and see if that works.
Maybe not submit it in at first or something?
Maybe what?
Maybe not submit it in at the beginning? Is that the plan, really?
I mean, I support helping people out, a hundred percent.
Sure.
I do worry about people being dependent and that kind of thing on it, and abusing it a little bit. But like I said, if we try it and it works out good for us, you know, we'll stick with it.
That being said, I mean, what's your thoughts on having a security camera pointed at it or something from our building or something?
No, that's a great idea. No, I think that's, that's, that'll, that'll hopefully at least slow down the people coming and taking it.
But I'm not saying this is everybody will surveil it, so I don't know.
Why not?
We'll have to have one there if we put a sign. They're not used to it if it's not, so.
Just thinking out loud, I think a benefit to, going back on what I said a second ago, a benefit to having it at the park is I think, a lot of the, the ones I worry about the most are children who are in poverty and don't have food because that affects them the rest of their life. It affects their ability to learn and things like that. And you're probably more likely to pick up kids at a park, or a place that they frequent, and maybe ball fields or... I don't know. I, I, I worry about, I wanna take care of the people that I worry about attracting in, people who just kind of hang out all the time, and that creates an unsafe environment as well.
I mean, I, I could be wrong, but I can't imagine anyone's just gonna like loiter around. It's just gonna be a little covered with like some canned food in it. So, I mean, I, I, I guess they could, but I don't know.
I, I don't think they're gonna loiter around. I think they'll come and take what they need or believe in. And, but we do have other things in town that, that we have access to as far as Food Care Coalition, a few things like that, that do services such as this. This is, I guess, just more convenient if you're, if you live in town.
What's that?
Skate park. I would have wanted a skate park.
Okay, so what's your pleasure? Munchies. I, I'm, I don't have a problem with a trial period, just to see it.
I'll make a motion that we, and I appreciate your efforts in trying to help people, and I think we pay some, we want to be able to help people. So I make a motion that we try it on a trial basis, maybe we do it for six months, and do it in, in here at this facility out, out there in front, and see how it goes. And I think anytime we can help people, it's a great thing. And I, I've always, if people come in and try to help solutions to problems or make things happen, I mean, I wanna bend over backwards to help people like you, so that's my motion.
We'll have a, a motion by Councilman Hewitt. We have a second?
I'll second that.
A second by Councilman Hardy? All in favor?
Aye.
Pause. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Discussion regarding the Cobblestone Hotel located approximately ten forty west state from itself.
Brian, you want me to take this one?
Yes, please.
Brian and I have been working in the city, been working to try to get this hotel company to find a place to locate based. And they, they said they have investors, and they were trying to, they've looked at several different locations and have had a hard time finding some property. Brian and I suggested that maybe they contact the owners of the Fars Ice Cream property. And, and they did, and they met with the owners there. I, I was not aware that the, there was a transition period in our S-one zone for the residential, and so when I became aware of that, we talked to, can't remember his name, Tim, I don't know his last name, that this may not be the right site for this. He still has met with the owners and still would like to pursue this if the city council is willing to move forward. But to do that, we have to change the ordinance. Right now, the, the transition ord, the transition ordinance that we have on the books allows, requires separation of three hundred feet for a, a multi-level building of that, of that sort. There has to be a buffer of three hundred feet. So we told Tim that we would at least talk to the council. If the council feels like that's not a good location, or if they don't want to amend that, then really, there's no reason to, to do a, an amendment to the zoning ordinance that's text to lower that down and try to see if that would be allowed in this, in this area. So we can have discussion on this. One of the property owners, or, or Tim, has asked me that we, that I look at other areas, other cities, and what their buffer requirements are. And so I didn't get to look at a lot. I, I woke up, couldn't sleep at midnight, so I looked at three cities. I looked at Provo and Spanish Fork and Springville, but I haven't looked at any other site that. So those three communities, they have a much smaller buffer area. Provo's ten feet, Springville's twenty-five feet to a hotel, and Spanish Fork's ten feet plus, putting up a six-foot wall as the transition between the, the residential area and the commercial area. So that's really all the, the, the time I had to look into that. But I guess if he just wants a discussion with you, if you, if this is not a good location, or you're not willing to, to adjust that or tweak that ordinance, then really, they'll have to look elsewhere for, to try to find another location for that hotel. Brian can weigh in. I think we've looked at four or five different, or this Cobblestone group has looked at four or five different locations and has had just a little bit of difficult time finding some property that would, that would be allowed to build this location. So just open up the comments. We do have one owner here of the property, the Fars Ice Cream. Do you have questions for him?
I came with myself, so. It isn't as much the hotel that I have the problem with. It's more the height, I guess, is my issue, looking at people's stockyards, I guess. If you look at some of the other taller hotels, then they're really not the same situation. I mean, Springville, they're all out by the freeway. Spanish, they're all out by the freeway. They're not located next to a residential. Neighbor, I guess that's my issue with it.
I, I think one of my concerns will be lighting, because, you know, there's gonna, gonna have to be parking lots, they're gonna have to be lit up.
to be parking lots, they're gonna have to be lit up. So I don't know how the neighbors are gonna feel about the lighting aspect of it. And one thing I remember from the public hearing we had before was a lot of discussion about light and lights in their houses. So certainly that's something we would have to look at. If we were gonna move forward with this, we'd have to figure out how we're gonna handle those types of things. And then secondly, I'm not even sure six foot, fence would be high enough, I think we might have to make it higher if you're gonna try to really insulate them from that effect. But I also like it as a great location, you know, from other cities I've seen, that's, they do a lot of, they're just right there next to a place like Fars and yet that gives them a chance to kinda be back where the, you know, they can have a bit quieter area where the people that come to the hotel would be able to park the cars and go.
So this was an email question that already came out to us internally and I'll just revoice my opinion, I don't think it's the right building for the right place. I like what they're doing over there and I'm excited and I went to bat and I think I was the one who passed the motion that Fars Ice Cream comes in. And so I'm excited to have growth there, but we talked about growth represents Payson and who we are and I don't think that's, that's the right move is to put a hotel that's multi-story is right in somebody's backyard. I mean, I agree that it's a great location, it's right by Fars Ice Cream, it's right by the freeways, from that aspect it's good, but you also have the other side of it and I'd like to see the hotel, I just don't think that that's the right move for Payson in that particular location. I don't think, I don't think we're so desperate for growth that we're gonna start shoving things into people's backyards and make it be a community that we don't recognize. Shoving's probably not the right term because that implies force that's probably not intended, but.
Travis, have we, has there been any communication on the road behind Walmart?
Yeah, we have a meeting next week, I think, a long meeting.
Look positive, negative, what?
I have no idea. They didn't give me any indication.
I think there's some better locations more.
I just think whether it's the hotel discussion or it's another discussion, we have some residential areas next to S1 and, you know, if it's not this one, it's gonna be a discussion down by where, by Walmart, where that subdivision, if you have something in Chase Brook that wants to build a multi-level and you've got that same issue that you're gonna have to deal with. So it's not just specific to this site, but it's, I looked at the purpose on our ordinance that we have there and it says, council ought to be careful on zoning in S1 because this is very high intensity commercial development. And if we don't want that kind of development, then we shouldn't zone it S1 in those properties. And so that's something that we need to decide, but it's maybe not just this location, but I just look at some of the other cities and if we have a 300-foot buffer in every other city, the most we can, I mean, Springville, the most I think of the junkyard is 50 feet. You know, I don't know if we need to be so far on the fringe of every other community that does economic development, commercials. So that was my concern is we're, I don't know of any other city that has a 300-foot buffer anywhere. And I didn't look at, I gave that disclaimer, I haven't looked, but whether that's what we wanna do for.
Meaning that we can put in single-story businesses there? So if a sit-down restaurant comes in or what was it? So we're not asking you to weigh in on anything else?
I'll do that.
But you were talking about putting in, you talked to us about what you wanted to put in back there that you were looking to develop, it was a 55-plus home or it was?
Three-story apartment.
I think three-story apartments, which we're not.
Right.
Well, what works if it's residential, isn't it?
Remind me. There was, I mean, I'd rather not disclose all of it.
Okay, sure, sure, sure. I know in general, we were talking about business and.
There was a mix of, because of the way it was zoned and because of what we're allowed to do, it was multiple story, like at least two stories with residential and commercial.
We have to come up to the microphone.
You know, if the hotel's out front where the ice cream shop, it might be a little bit different for me.
Just.
Do I have to switch places?
You want?
Yeah, because then they would be like, everybody's back yard.
So, I mean, the piece of property came with some issues that we knew of and so as far as speaking to the, being more out at the front, there was, you know, there's frontage problems and access ingress egress. And I do agree that, you know, the city is doing their job as far as the latest, they're supposed to look out for the residents and for the city. So we get that as far as the current owners of land. But speaking to Dave's comment, there is gonna, if we don't sell or invest in this, you know, we're gonna want to invest in something else and there's gonna be lighting and there's gonna be, maybe it's not the four stories. We actually went to them even before all of, they came to us and we actually expressed our concern about the four stories. And they may go a little bit lower than that, but it would still be a hotel. And the concern we would have going lower than that is we don't want them to change too much because if Payson does get a hotel, we want it to be quality.
Sure.
We want it to be, you know, mid to higher end and to attract the right kind of atmosphere and business. And I think it'd be a mistake to go lower quality than what Cobblestone is doing. So wherever you end up doing that, I think they have a proven record of towns like Payson, demographics and being successful. We realize that maybe, maybe our piece of property isn't the right one, but we also are willing to invest in what we think will be good. As far as what I said back there, I can't exactly remember except that there was plans for both residential and commercial properties or business that would go in. It wouldn't be four stories, it would never four stories. There's been some change in what we did initially plan simply because you can't even get an excavator. I mean, everything is building, it's just booming and so we've been delayed longer than what we thought and the market's changing for what we had planned at the back there. So we're, and then we got approached by the hotel. So there's, some of it's up in the air.
Jill, what's the zoning area getting right now?
It is S1.
For the whole piece?
Yes. And so, but we do, as Dave had mentioned, we do have a provision in our ordinance set for that distance. Then you do look at height of structures, you look at noise, you look at lighting, you look at hours of operation. So you're looking about how the use, it could impact the existing residential in the area. And so, yeah, so there is another level of scrutiny, I guess you could say, on any development that happens within that 300 feet, just because that residential element is there.
What can go in that 300 feet?
So you can still have office buildings, you can still have.
You can have a parking lot, can't you?
You can still have a restaurant, you can, you know, those uses that are there, but you're looking at hours of operation, I mean, a hotel's 24/7. But you're looking at all of those things. So I mean, still the uses in the S1 zone are still considered, but that, those extra considerations have to be discussed to say, will those negatively impact residential and will a four-story hotel limit the privacy that those residential properties have?
Have a couple of comments on this. One is the hotel has had a challenge in finding something in the area they want. We wanna be business friendly, but then we also have to watch out for residents and part of this is, Dave and I suggested different spots and we suggested this spot because it was an open spot and we didn't think about the zoning, you know, and then we knew it was zoned S1, which is commercial, so we didn't think about that. So part of that, part of this coming back to us that we suggest different spots trying to help them find a spot. I do have a challenge of putting a hotel there, we're not close with the four-story, but I think going back to Dave's point, I think we need to look at our ordinance and make sure that we are making it so people can come here and build and be more in line with other communities instead of be way out in left field. So I think we need to do that at the same time. I think we need to try to help them find another spot for right now and maybe we come back and revisit at some point in time if nothing happens. But also I have a challenge, we talked about giving them incentives to go to a spot and I think I'd have a real challenge of giving them incentive to go to a spot that the residents don't really want right there. So that's a challenge for me, giving them incentive. If they don't give the incentives, I don't think they're gonna wanna go there anyway. So those are some of my thoughts.
I do have to agree, I think we need to look at the ordinance and be proactive in looking at that if we're way out of, you know, way out of left field based on what other cities are doing.
Oh, the residents may not feel that way.
Yeah, but I'm not, I'm not saying that we're doing that, put the hotel there, but what I'm saying is we need to be looking at that ordinance.
I agree. Yeah. Okay, so what I'm hearing is probably you're not interested in looking at changing that to make sure that the hotel can be accommodated there, so we'll, we'll work it, we'll start working for some other properties. And hopefully we'll continue with the investor group there that will find some.
Skyscraper.
That can go in there as well because we need to, we need to bring some businesses in here.
And that's my point, if the ordinance is such that it would be a difficult course wherever, then we need to be looking at that ordinance.
We have a motion to adjourn to the redevelopment agency.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilman Hardy to adjourn. Second by Councilman Hewitt. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay. As director of Redevelopment Agency, we have a public hearing resolution approving the sale of a portion of parcel 30-062-049 for development.
I'll make the motion that we go into public hearing.
Motion by Council, Director Hardy. Second by Director Hewitt. All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Counsel, what we've got here is, we did publish this and I don't know if maybe you wanna ask if there's anybody here for this specifically hearing. We put this in the paper anticipating the public hearing. As we worked with the realtors and the developer, they did move to a different location, so it's a different parcel number. So as you remember last council meeting, we talked about we have to re-know this for the first meeting in October. So I'm not asking that we take any action on this, but if people looked at the paper and came wanting this public comment, we can have that comment. But we have noticed it again for the first meeting in October with the proper.
So they don't wanna make sure we extend the public hearing to that person?
Yeah, well, we've already noticed it for another public hearing on that day, so it's already scheduled. I know last, last time you suggested that maybe we discuss this further in a closed session with our representatives, Coldwell Banker, and so we're prepared to do that while we're in the redevelopment agency. The only other item that we have on the agenda is we have Lynell Smith here from the Housing Authority that was gonna do a little work session on the Wasatch Mental Health piece of property. And if you wanna go into a closed session for a minute and then come out and do that or if you wanna reverse and have this work session first and then we can do that, it's just up to you how you wanna proceed.
Let's do the work session. I'd say work session first.
Okay. So do you wanna do the public hearings? If anybody has a comment on it? Yeah, if you wanna have anybody that they came specifically for this item, they come up and discuss.
Do we have anybody in the public that'd like to comment on this? Seeing that, we'll pause the public hearing, I guess.
I'll make a motion we.
I'll make a motion we close the public hearing.
Pause it by Director Hewitt.
Second.
Second by Director, sorry, Director, Director Welton. All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
So if you're gonna go out of order, we need to make a motion to allow the RDA and Bank and Regular Council meeting, then we can proceed on.
So motion to go out of RDA. So moved.
Second.
Got that, directors? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. So now we're back in council and can I amend the agenda? Would you like, can we just make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we allow the mayor pro temp.
Motion by Councilman Hardy to amend the agenda.
Second.
Second by Councilman Welton. Welton, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Okay, so now we'll go to the presentation by Utah County Housing Authority regarding supportive housing.
Do you have a presentation?
I can pull it up. We should talk to them. I'll pull up the presentation, I think I sent it out to all of you, but I'll get my laptop and just wait and print it, present it up. But Lynell Smith is the executive director of the Utah County Housing Authority. She along with Wasatch Mental Health came a month or so ago and met with staff regarding a proposal of doing some housing there along the, where the Wasatch Mental Health building is being constructed. We indicated that we'd like to come and maybe do a little work session with the city council. We did invite the planning commissioner, I think there's a couple of planning commissioners here. And so I'll try to pull that up and I'll let Lynell speak to it for a minute while I'm getting that set up and we'll go from there.
Thank you for your time to listen to my little spiel here. I was excited to hear that you like to help people in need, that's why I'm here. The bottom line is I would like to respectfully request that you consider updating, amending, addressing your zoning and your master plan in that area to allow for affordable housing. That's the bottom line here. So Wasatch Mental Health, they own that land, as you know, adjacent to an office building and they're a Medicaid provider for mental health services in Utah County. And their clients struggle to find affordable and safe housing. And the Housing Authority has a successful history of providing affordable housing inventory throughout Utah County focusing on special needs populations. And we, Wasatch and the Housing Authority together have a successful partnership history of providing housing and care for clients through intensive wraparound services, which is called permanent supportive housing. That's where a client is placed in a housing unit and wraparound services are provided so they can be successful there. Therapy, counseling, employment skills, social skills, that kind of thing, whatever they need. So the target population for this little area would be disabled adults who have a history of homelessness and they need supportive services to increase the likelihood of success in our community. They're not transitional units, it would be permanent housing for these folks. And again, supportive housing is an evidence-based housing intervention that combines non-time-limited affordable housing assistance with wraparound supportive service for people experiencing homelessness. We've done this model in several other cities in the community. We have 39 other clients throughout Utah County and we currently have five in Payson already that we're doing a switch. Make sure my presentation, before you get your pictures.
We're trying to get it, Lynell.
You're good, you're good, you're good. The demographics of our current clients, they're 41 average age, their average annual income is $7,000 a year. Their income sources include social security, general assistance, and several are actually working, Subway, McElbee's, Burger King, Dollar Store. So they are contributing members of the community. The average length of time that they're on the program is approximately 21 months. So even though it's all permanent housing, after a couple of years, they're able to move out further into the community without that support network. And their average rent based on their income is $170. So these are folks that are, they fall under the 30% of the area median income, which is $14,000 for families one. So the concept of the project of what we're proposing is again based on zoning and we need to look at cost efficiencies as well as we develop this project. But we're looking for between 25 to 50 units on this two-acre parcel. One-bedroom units, all on one side, new construction, close to supportive services with intensive case management and an opportunity for social life and employment skills training. The services to be provided are comprehensive mental health and substantive use services, case management, individual and group therapy, medication management, psychiatric services and social skills. And as Wasatch is a Medicaid provider, they have funding available to have a good team available 24/7. So if the police come out and they need a. available twenty-four seven, so if the, the police come out and they need a nurse or a doctor, there's somebody on call, if we've got an episode, we can call a caseworker to come out and help navigate through a crisis. And then I've got pictures of some of our other projects that we were wanting to model this project out of, or maybe. I don't do a song and dance, I'm sorry.
I could, I could ask you some questions.
Absolutely.
I just wanted, before Lynell started, I wanted, I don't have a vote or anything, but I am on the Housing Authority's board. Mayor Spernella Evans was the one that recommended that, I think, back then, so I just wanted to put that out with council that, you know, that there could be a conflict for me, but...
So I'll, I'll help you while you're, while we're waiting for this. You said you had five in Payson, well, you got your pictures, so I'll wait.
We do have five in Payson, I don't know the exact address, they're, they could be in the Old Robbins Center, I'm not sure.
So they all in one location, or they're just interspersed around the city?
And then they, they transport them to services. So we have thirty-nine throughout Utah County, five in Payson, the bus comes through and transports them to service.
So are we talking about twenty-five to fifty separate units then?
No.
I, I'm a little confused here, I'd like to know, bedrooms, so it would be in one building?
One, one building or possibly several buildings, maybe four, five, six buildings? So these pictures, I think, will help you. Okay, so this is our senior project in American Fork, and there's three buildings on point eight, six acres, twelve units there, and it's kinda hard to see, but you've got two buildings that face the street, a building in the back with the parking in the back. It's a fourplex, and the entrances are on all four sides of the unit, so as you drive by, it looks more like a house, but it is an actual fourplex, so we would consider that four units in one building.
And how many units have you got county-wide right now?
County-wide, under this permanent supportive housing model?
Right.
Thirty-nine.
So we conceivably could have half the, we'd be half of the group if we did fifty units, half of what you've got in the county.
Correct. But we'll show you the need in the county as well, and in Payson. This is the inside of this senior complex, very easy to maintain. This was built in two thousand and eleven. And we've got a laundry in the unit with the bathroom. This picture is actually taken in the middle of the day, there are no windows in that bathroom area, we've got a skylight, and it is well-built. This is a project that we just had groundbreaking on yesterday, where there's seven buildings on two acres, two and a quarter acres, same concept, so we have twenty-six units, and one unit is actually two units with a common area in the other half of a community space. So we've got seven buildings spread out in two acres. This is our project in Springville, right on Main Street, that's been in operation a little over a year now. Thirty-one units in one building, with commercial space on the ground floor, and we have five units set aside for homeless on one and a half acres. And as I was talking with Wasatch Mental Health, Dr. Korbaka is very supportive of this concept, and he apologizes for not being here, he's out of town today. He likes the concept of the commercial on the ground floor, possibly giving these clients an employment opportunity to get trained as maybe coffee shop, barista, sandwich shop, something, get some training, and then move on into the community. This is the inside of those apartments. If we go over two levels, we, we have to have an elevator, our funding requirements are an elevator over two levels. So right now, well, as of January of seventeen, seventeen percent of Utah's renter households live in Utah County. Twenty-one percent of Utah County renter households are extremely low income, making less than eight, thirty percent AMI, excuse me, or fourteen thousand for a family of one. So the gap of affordable and available units in Utah County for folks making under thirty percent AMI is seventy-five hundred units right now, we're behind. And in Payson City, that's two hundred and sixty units. You've got the two hundred and sixty folks under fourteen thousand a year who cannot afford or find an available unit.
So what are they doing right now?
Partnered, or doubled up, living with family members and lost basement, that kind of thing. Partnerships, where we advocate good partnerships in our community, and Wasatch would provide the client outreach and the wraparound services. The Housing Authority would be the developer of this property, we would own it, and we would provide property management and rental subsidies for these folks. And then we're asking that Payson City provide community support, which I think we have the support here, and then consider the zoning for multi-family units in this area. And in the end, we have stabilized with healthy clients, reduced homelessness in our community, attractive affordable housing, and I think this, especially in light of the real brand model that everyone is concerned about, we have a successful project that we can show out of communities that work. And if you have questions, Dr. Korbaka or my cell's contact information.
I have a question, where does the funding come from for this?
Various sources, tax credit funding, Only Walker Housing Loan Fund, community CDBG funds, home funds through the consortium of cities and county. If Payson City has any funds to contribute, that would be great as well.
Did you have a site where you're looking at specifically for this?
Yes.
West of Wasatch Mental Health?
On, on the property right there?
Yes. So it'd be within their five acres right there? So east. So it'd be, so it'd be the property that was included in the subdivision that Wasatch owns. Yes, so it'd be to the east. Well, that's because of proximity. Absolutely. To the services. To their campus right there. Yeah, their campus, that's why they've looked at the site.
And, and who qualifies for housing in these units? How, how do you determine that, and how long do they, and how do you determine how long they stay?
We don't determine how long they stay, as long as they can live independently, they're good there.
Okay.
Eligibility would be based on criminal history, income, and a client of Wasatch Mental Health, so we need to have those services as a requirement to live there.
So if you say criminal history, does that mean they have no criminal history, or are they?
There is some criminal history that we cannot assist with, registered sex offenders we cannot assist with, manufacturing meth we cannot assist with, depending on what other criminal history may be, how long it's been, if they've gone through a treatment program, that kind of thing, any reoccurring incidences, those are all things that we consider.
Do we have any staff, staff comments from the DRC meeting or anything on this?
We have not discussed it with the DRC, as Lynell had mentioned, I mean, we, there was a few of us that discussed it, but we haven't talked to them, looking at sites, that particular site utilities and that are there. There would need to be some modifications made to our ordinance because of the, the type of facility, possibly the density that's proposed, for example, the one in American Fork ranges about thirteen units to the acre, so we, we may have to possibly make some amendments to that. Also, if there's some parking changes that need to be made, we require, you know, certain parking requirements that may, or may not, I mean, we'd get into the specifics with them. But a lot of it is just, you know, looking at, is there a need in the community, how much of that, that need do we fill with this particular project or in this site, or is it, is it dispersed throughout the community? Is this particular site the best location, you know, is it going to encourage more commercial in the area, or would it discourage, you know, if maybe it's gonna promote more residential than it would more commercial? Or as Lynell had mentioned, maybe there is an opportunity for more commercial and having that, that work and living environment. So, yeah, we've, we've looked at a number of things, but, you know, we felt like, yes, we do recognize the needs there, and we do wanna do our part to provide in our community. It was coming to the council to find out, is this something that you wanna support 'cause it would require modifications? And then is this the best location for it? Does it need to be shifted more to the north to allow for, you know, expansion of commercial? Or is it another location in the community? But as she mentioned, it's ideal for them because it's closer to the services, they don't have to worry about transporting because they're right there with the services that they need.
From a public safety standpoint, gee, any opinion?
I just, I guess it depends on what type of clientele we have there, I know we have the Mountain View Apartments that are really close that are somewhat, I think, started out as this same active situation, and it's mothballed into not the best conditions now. And then we have a retirement community right in the middle.
Yeah, I can, I know they're gonna talk about that.
Yeah. I, yeah, that was a concern I had. I think it would be unfair to make them feel uncomfortable on both sides of them, they already have a lot of concerns with what we have going on on the west side of them, which is a concern, I mean, it concerns us and frankly, concerns them probably more than us, since they live and breathe it every day, so do I think there's a need for it? I do think there's a need for it, is this the best place? In my opinion, no. But I guess it, it just depends on what, what they're looking to put there, I guess is what is, I guess, the answer to the question.
I do know that Mountain View does have history, and it's been for sale, and we have looked at purchasing it. I, I don't think it's fair to judge another affordable housing complex versus what the housing authority does, because we are on top of our properties, they are well-maintained, we have zero tolerance for criminal history or criminal activity while owning property. Definitely, there's some landlords in the community that could use some help, we're not one of those.
I have a question. I just, that's just where my concern with the funding is, 'cause if, if ever the legislator pulls the funding out, then that well-managed property goes away, so that's a concern. However, so there's a lot of studies that show that we spend far more on transient individuals if they don't have opportunities to get back, and so this kinda goes a little bit counter to what it sounded like I may have been saying earlier, but people can't get jobs if they don't have phones, and if they can't clean up, and if they don't have access to, to living on their own. And so without properties like this, the problem just continues to fester underneath the layers, and it doesn't get any better. And so this way, you give a humane way for people to, to get back on their feet, to, to feel included. Location's always a little bit of a concern, totally understand that, and I don't know that I'm ready to make a decision, but it's something that I've, I've looked a lot at and I've talked a lot over the years, and it's kinda the same thing with our prison system, we expect people to come, to, to do their time and come out as better people, but it's set up to be punitive to people, and they come out and they're not going to be better people because...
They've done their time, but they're still a felon and nobody will accept them.
They're, they're still a felon, and nobody will accept them, the only people they've communicated with, and this is different from yours, I'm going off on a tangent, but the only people they talk to are other felons, they don't get work skills necessarily, and they don't integrate, and they come back in on the other side and we expect them to be better, and they have no skills, and they have no work history, and they have nothing else to, to help, and so it's just a revolving door, and I'm sure Chief Bishop's probably seen that a little bit, I don't know what his stance is, but I'm sure he's seen that. And so, I like the idea, I like the concept, and I, I think I'm gonna say right now I'm probably in favor of it, I don't wanna make a decision today.
Thank you.
I have a question, you said there's two hundred and sixty people in Payson that need this service, so...
That need affordable housing.
Affordable housing.
Maybe not the Wasatch supportive housing, but affordable housing.
So, if, you know, we do our part and put something in Payson, are we gonna bring, are we gonna take care of the people in Payson, or are we gonna bring people from other areas that have a, a need and bring it in here? Okay, so there's no way we can say, we just wanna service this area?
I, I don't think you can.
Just a question.
But they would still have to be clients of Wasatch Mental Health.
Right, right.
So they would be within Utah County. And Wasatch would refer them, they would have to be folks that they are comfortable are able to live independently.
I guess I just have a, I don't know, there's a good chance that that road that goes right down to the middle, that will connect to the over fifty-five, has it ingress, egress road, just so you're aware. If it was at the dead end, I guess I wouldn't have as much a concern for the over fifty-five, but it will more than likely tie into that road on a level forty.
Are there some other questions?
Oh, go ahead.
So I just have a question. I mean, I'm looking at those units, they look really nice. Why are we not just like doing like a, you know, bedroom and the... I guess what I'm wondering is, okay, so you're giving them this pretty much free place to live. It's really nice, are they gonna be able to live and go get someplace that nice again? I don't think so. So, you know, it's like, why isn't it just like a lot of people, they're in one room, they have a bathroom and that's it? And then you have, because most people that are in apartments have to go to the laundromat, so you have a laundromat there where, you know, maybe four or five washers.
The laundry facilities are definitely negotiable, Wasatch is not sure that they want laundry facilities in each apartment, upkeep, tenants don't always...
But why not just have them like, you know, just, you know, the bedroom and the kitchen, everything's right there instead of...
More of a studio.
Yes, just a studio.
We can consider that, definitely.
I mean, I'm looking at, like, if they do leave, they're probably only gonna be able to afford a studio.
Is that with the housing voucher that they have, they can go out in the community and find anything under the fair market rents?
Which are really high now.
Rents are higher than fair market rents right now in our community, yes, it's a challenge. We can't limit their opportunity either to move in here.
Yeah, if you, you know, I'm like them, maybe put it back behind, so you still have the front for commercial, and they're still there, the hospital's across the road, there's mental health, but I'm not, and I'm not saying it's smushing down into little teeny rooms, but I'm still looking at the studios, is that's more than they're ever gonna get anyway, or...
Not necessarily. They're in one bedroom apartments right now in the community, the thirty-nine that we're assisting.
But you're assisting them, but that's what I'm saying, is you can make a really nice studio apartment.
Sure, sure I can.
And, and for, if there's only one person, I guess that's why I don't understand why they, they would need more than just a studio, because it's just them.
It's negotiable. We're not set on my bedrooms, that's what we've done, we can certainly consider studios. Do you, can you pull up that site, that parcel, I'm sorry, Wasatch, and show them? The building's in the one corner, we're looking at this other back corner or the side, and Wasatch is looking at someone that's about a few square meters. So it's split into four pieces, four sections, about five acres. I don't know if there's land surrounding that area, Wasatch, you know, just another property, I don't consider land swap or purchase agreement, I don't know, it's just ideal to have them there with us, they're working any more successfully.
Well, so we're talking about location, and, and that's something that makes this an ideal location, I mean, what better place to put them than this beautiful Wasatch Mental Health? I mean, I would assume that they have some buy-in with their clientele.
They have a similar campus.
And the hospital's across the street.
They have a similar campus and problem where they have an administrative office, and then they have residential apartments right there on that piece of property.
How long has that one been in operation?
Long time.
And do you know crime statistics? Because I think the concern with location is, is how it's going to impact...
I can, I can, I can ask.
Because I think that'd be interesting, like, you've got a long-term project that we can look at.
Twenty years, you haven't had a single call.
Right, right.
Versus dozens every day.
Right, I think, and they don't wanna put words in their mouth, but I think for some of the others, if, and the community members, I think that's...
I'd be happy to research that.
That goes a long ways to look at that. Where are we at as far as percentage of affordable housing in our city? Aren't we supposed to have a certain percentage?
We do meet the state mandates.
So do we have excessive amounts compared to other communities? That's another concern.
We do, except for the state mandate does not address the below the 30% AMI. That is not a mandate by the state, the city has to provide that. But there is a need for that in every community. So we all get, we get focused on the 80% AMI because that's what the state requires every city to meet.
And they can be homeowners.
Yeah, yes.
More.
But, but we all know, when we do our biennial report to the state to show that we're meeting this affordable housing requirement, as planners, we all see that there's still this other 30, you know, less than 30% AMI and we know that those numbers are there. And, but we're not mandated to do it. And so when you have organizations like the Housing Authority that are willing to, to assist communities with that, you know, I think every community's considering that, that, you know, we recognize that there are residents in this community that could benefit from these facilities. But yes, we do meet and even exceed the required...
Well, there's part of the concern, like, I think in general, I'm actually in favor of it, the more I talk about it, the more I think about it. But the concern too, though, is Payson is full of low income housing and do we need to diversify in another direction?
And I think every community would agree that we need to disperse it throughout the county. You know, this is a county-wide issue.
Well, I'm talking more about housing levels. Like, if we stay right here and there's nothing wrong with those people, I was, I'm one of those, I teach school, I don't make lots of money, right? But I think you need to make sure that you're also a community that's going to want to bring in some mid-level, mid-high, high-level houses as well too. And if all we're getting is low income, that's a concern for the community as far as growth goes. But I do, but I do like, I mean, saying that, I like this, but that is a concern.
Because you do need to be looking at the diversity and you need to be looking at your median income as a community. Because that, that affects funding and grants and, you know, a lot of other, a lot of other things. The type of economic development, the type of commercial businesses that you get, the type of employment opportunities, absolutely.
Well, you had mentioned, you showed one side that had housing on top of commercial properties. And I'm looking at it, you were talking sandwich shops, small things like that. I'm not, I, I question whether or not there's enough sustainability there. What's going to draw the people there other than the sandwich shop? There, there's not, I mean, what's the projected road type there?
The hospitals across the street, when people visit, people in the hospital...
It's only the ending place.
People want someplace to eat and the road, the I-15 study shows the road's gonna come in right along that area. So you're gonna be bringing traffic into the town from I-15.
I'm just kind of trying to spur that.
Maybe not a sandwich shop, maybe some other little business.
But yeah, I'm not, you can't sustain business.
You know, as long as it's not a subway, I think we've got plenty of those. We have three in Payson. But just something like that. And I could see that, the hospital being a draw, something right there. But I just, I was curious.
Sure.
That's a good question.
So are those subsidized, are they sold off as private entities later on or are they rented out?
Our commercial in Springville, we sold the commercial space off. And then he is looking for long-term lease holders.
But the housing units aren't sold off?
No. And we're actually restricted, they have to remain affordable for 50 years. So if we were to sell it, they still need to remain affordable. So as you can, this is the hospital, yes?
Yes.
So this is that state road. There's the Wassatch building. So this parcel is five acres. The road's gonna go through the middle, that's their office building. They're looking at selling this front piece off commercially and we're looking at developing this other side. And I think there's a retention pond back here somewhere that we can incorporate into a walking path or something nice, a little park area or some, some sort. Would like to stay in the back half if we can, depending on the density and what you would approve.
You want to save the back half or you want to put, I'll stay in the back half when I get here.
Wassatch doesn't have a lot of traffic coming off this road other than clients are not shopping for services. People aren't gonna be driving in, so they're happy in the back. They had proposed this, this half for us. Depending on that state where it is.
What I was saying, that road to the west, is it gonna loop into that?
This one?
No, the next one over. Keep going, that whole progress is gonna go...
See how those roads...
Right there.
Okay. So it's gonna loop back around to here?
No, it's gonna loop onto your road.
Oh, this one right here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And what, and what's the concern?
It's just, that's just elderly housing now, they're over, that's all over 55.
Okay.
As, as in the chief discussed.
Are we concerned that, that some of the people saying that affordable housing would wander over? Is that what we're concerned about?
Yeah, I can...
It was the clientele, basically.
Yeah. I mean, when we had the hearing to put Wassatch Mental Health right there, there was a lot of opposition from those seniors right next to you. Tell it was, we more or less had it said that there was not gonna be any of that kind of housing there. And now we're coming back and saying, we're talking about putting a permanent facility there. I'm, I'm sure we're gonna have a lot of opposition in that area, yeah. And my other concern is, we have the lowest median income in the county right now. Now, some of those statistics mean something for somebody else that's gonna come in and want to try to put some of the other business or whatever in Payson. Is that gonna hurt us from that standpoint? Now, that's not fair to those people. What I'm saying is that you're trying to take care of it and I, it's a value, it's a service that needs to be provided. I'm just having a lot of trouble with right there.
Because of the senior community?
Yeah, and they're gonna look at it as kind of a bait and switch because, am I wrong, Scott? I think they would kind of imply that...
They're going to propose on the next piece over, multifamily, yeah, it's just... Because they were told when they moved down there, there would be more...
More housing like theirs.
More what's there down the road. Like I said, when they came, once they found out that the Wassatch model was open night and night, they was good with it, it was not, it was 24-hour service.
If we went with that little fourplex model scattered that looks more like the senior properties, would they be open to that?
I mean, I'm not opposed to this coming to the public and have a hearing, but I'm anticipating what you're gonna hear.
We typically get feedback at every project we develop. We're the first until it's developed and then it's the best thing in the neighborhood.
Because, but you know, one, just a hypothetical question is, would, would this kind of facility be proposed for Alpine or Highland? And have they got any?
Wassatch does not own land there.
Yeah, but I'm talking about that kind of a project. I'm not talking about the Wassatch piece.
Affordable housing?
Affordable housing is what I'm talking about.
If we can find affordable land, we would live there, definitely.
But are there any right now?
There's nothing affordable in Alpine, I don't know. But we do have, we do have subsidized folks that live there.
Okay.
Okay. Deal, go ahead.
So as part of it, just to give direction to Lanell and to give it, and to staff, you know, if we need to look at making some amendments or look at location, is part of it, and I guess part of this is the, is based on a comment you made, Councilman Hardy, is it number? Is number the concern also? I mean, is it, you know, we, we may be able to integrate so many in a charter community, but, but the entire 50 that they're looking at trying, I mean, is, is that part of the concern also with the median income? Is, is maybe that we're integrating some of those units, but not the demand or the request now of 50?
Yeah, I think that's part of it. I, I just hear the perceptions of what Payson is. And sometimes it's kind of like, we're the dumping ground, okay? And I'm not saying this project that you're talking about is a dumping ground, but the perception will be out there. That's why I'm saying I think you're gonna have a lot of opposition from the seniors that are just a couple streets over. I mean, I've had people in my office talking to me about these kinds of projects, that they don't want them. So I think we have to be very careful if we're gonna proceed with one of these. I, it's certainly a need. I can't argue that. I think we need to be providing that type of an opportunity for people to get their lives straightened out and get skills they may need to get out and integrate and be on their own. So I would like to hear the public come in. I don't think we should stop and say, absolutely not here. I think we can have the hearing, but maybe have some alternatives. As to what we could do that maybe would not be a huge project, maybe something a little bit smaller.
You know, there's the concern you expressed about the retirement community there. What is it, how do I put this? What takes place during the day or the evening? What activities do they have or not? Or, or what do they do to, I almost said entertain, but that's not the right word, to, to keep busy at some...
What anyone else does in the community?
Pardon?
What anyone else does in the community?
Well, do they have transportation to get somewhere in the community?
The bus is not too far.
It's really close to a bus stop.
There is a bus stop.
Okay, I'm, I mean, expand my, expand my vision. If, if they don't have a lot of loiter time, leisure time's one thing, loiter time's another thing. They would not be as, as apt to be walking around roaming in places where it would bother people. Is that fair? Is it a fair assessment?
I think that's a fair assessment for any individual, yes. You stay busy, you're out of trouble.
Okay, but is there any provisions to help them stay busy?
I can't speak for Wassatch Mental Health. I don't know all of the, the services that they provide. I do know they have a clubhouse and problem where people go for the day. I do know that. I don't know if that's what they're proposing in this building or not, I can't...
So maybe my problem is, I don't understand the relationship in between what you do and the Wassatch Mental Health.
We provide the housing. Wassatch provides the case service. To keep these clients successful and housed in the community.
And you're two separate entities, correct?
Absolutely.
All right, well, I, to me, in my way of thinking, if I, if I lived down in that area, that'd be, that'd be a major question. I'd want to know what, what, certainly if they're working something like that, I think it would be tremendous. But if they're just sitting around and, and they can tell the idiot like I am now that I'm retired, I would worry about me in that situation.
We have a complex in Springville, another complex, Second East and Third South. Nine apartments. It's actually shared housing. Eight of those nine apartments are two-bedroom. So we have clients living together. And we have owned that property for, gosh, I don't know, almost 20 years. And I would dare say the police are never there, very rarely are they there.
I'm not concerned about there being a complex where they live, I'm concerned about them being at somebody else's complex. I think that's what the concern is with a group of people that live over there.
They will not be wandering around in that senior complex, they just won't. We talked about maybe putting in a basketball court. A lot of these clients are not physically active. So the community room where there is a TV, big screen TV, they have video nights, that kind of thing. A lot of these clients do not interact socially, a lot. They like to be in their apartment, that's where they're at.
Correct, and that's a problem if they wanted, if they were gonna try and find a job, wouldn't it?
Well, some clients can't ever be employed.
Okay.
And that doesn't mean they're a problem to society.
I, 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 your authority is in a position to house, trying to house people. It's not in a position to try and, I'll put this quote, entertain people.
Correct.
Who's in that position to do that?
Wassatch would provide that supportive service.
So that's part of their, that's part of their service?
Group therapy.
So it would be up to you and Wassatch to get...
You, Wassatch Mental Health clients.
Well, it would be up to you and, and Wassatch and maybe the city to get together and say, okay, we need to plan some of these amenities in these, in these complexes to correspond with, with, with what?
Possibly. But I would like to plan the amenities that the clients would use instead of just having it there to me.
No sense of doing it, but, but that, that door is open.
I just have just a couple of things. One is, is looking at a lot of the projects are happening now. You get the commercial on the bottom, the housing on the top. I like that concept. I may personally, I wouldn't look at anything, I don't know where I am yet. But I think on the lower end and the higher end, I think we'd be taking our disproportionate share of that type of housing if we went up to 50. I think we'd be at the lower end and trying to do our part, but I think we ought to be at the lower end. So that's where I am right now, so.
Thank you. Any other questions, honey?
Where do you want to go from here?
Need direction?
Yeah, we need direction. Because we would definitely have to work with Lanell and her team to identify, you know, the type of housing product. I mean, are we looking at, you know, the single story above grade fourplex that's in America Four? Or are we looking at a comedy more units and doing the multiple story? I know you had mentioned that Dr....
Promaca?
Promaca had, had mentioned something about the relationship between the housing and the, the work opportunities. And so I don't know if he supports the multiple story better, you know, or, you know, versus, you know, the fourplex type. But, you know, those are the things that we need to discuss. And then, I mean, because what is the best type of housing product in this location? You have a three-story building with Wassatch Mental, maybe a multi-story building with residential fits in well in that, in that situation. But, you know, so those are, I mean, we definitely need to continue the conversation. I don't know if we could really get a lot of clear direction tonight. But if it's something that you're supportive of, that we need to start looking at providing this type of housing in our community and change your ordinance regardless of location.
I don't want to go out on a limb here. Don't get, don't hate me. I sold that piece to Wassatch Mental, but I tell you what, I don't know that I would have if I knew this was coming down the pipe. Because I, we sold it as commercial and I was trying to protect the residents. So that's where I, that's where I'm at.
Okay.
And as a general citizen right now, talking, I met, wanting you and the doctor to get together and tell me what the heck is going to entertain... I'm, I'm sorry, I have a torturous word. But if, if, if you had a retail on the bottom, there's not gonna be enough out there for retail for them there in this location. Whereas at the Springville one, that's an obviously good location.
Same size car.
That's my concern. I want to hear what, what, what he's got to say in relationship to daily activities or... Because, you know, I hate to sit around idle myself and not have anything to do.
That's a question.
I think one thing that would, it's why this is difficult, talking about any development on the east side, is we don't have a master plan for the north side of the highway. And that's what makes it so difficult is we, you may, I mean, through a master planning process of looking at a much larger area, you may be able to find an area that's still in, in good proximity. I mean, it's great that the Housing Authority has this relationship with Wassatch Mental. So the ideal situation is this property. Or, as she mentioned, maybe they trade, trade land with another property owner that's in the general location in order for that to be there. But I think that's part of the struggle here too is, you know, we've got these existing uses and we've got this, we've got these medical facilities there and now we're expanding on these services in the area. So it makes it ideal for this new type of housing opportunity. But we haven't master planned the area to see how were we gonna, what uses are appropriate to this area and how are they going to coexist? And so I don't know if, I don't know what Lanell's timeline is for, for this, the funding that she's applying for or these units being in. I mean, if it's, if it's two or three years out, I mean, maybe that's the ability to... Right, it's always immediate. I mean, we know that because there's already a deficiency. But, you know, maybe if we were able to answer those questions in a much more global area or, you know, or view...
But you go start talking with people, but you got me and Mikey in a bad spot, that's what I know.
Can I, can I give some general direction and see if everybody's fine with this? Is that you start dialogue with the seniors there and talking on a smaller scale, not the big scale. Have information, but what you want to do there, how it fits in with Wassatch Mental Health. What crimes, the statistics, get some information like that and start a dialogue with them. And then see if you can come out something that will work with them. And then if it works with them, and that's, it works. But if it doesn't work with them, then we have a challenge. But that's where I would start and, and start that dialogue and just see where it goes and then we can go from there. But that'd be my general direction, but...
Drive down Level 40, the last house on the right.
That'd be my challenge person.
Well, she's the boss down there.
Well, she's the boss down there.
Are those homeowners or renters there?
They're homeowners.
Homeowners. She's, she's the HOA on the right side. There are two homeowner associations down there. The one on the left and then the one on the right.
I think that's good direction. Did we ever hear from the planning commissioners? I'd like to hear what they have to think. I know we have three of you here. You not want to go put your necks out on the line here or...
Well, I'll, I'll say something that I think that there is a need for this in the area. Um, I was in on the discussions with the, with the the residents there and the senior residents. And some of them were very adamant about it, that that we not do any kind of residential. Which almost surprised me because they're very tight-packed in their, they were, they were acting like, well, we can't have that. That's what we already have. And so that, that to me was a little weird, the way they were, the the, they were acting as far as what that was. But I do think there's some, a need for that in the community. And whether this is the right location or not, I I can't say that right now. But I do think there is a need for that kind of housing in the community.
Well, in reality, unless you put it out in the middle of a field that has nothing around it right now.
Well, it's always not my backyard.
Place up zero street.
Well, well, it's always not my backyard, it doesn't matter what it is.
Because you could wait and the more people start developing around it, the harder this discussion is going to be down the road. Like, it's a need that we have and it's a good location. But no, no location's perfect. And I understand and I appreciate that and and I think that's good discussion as you you meet with those, but the fifty-five, yes, plus community.
Yeah, it's wide open.
For sale?
Nope, not for sale, but it's wide open. It's nice to go to. I got it every night.
Need someone there to sell them.
Every night, yep. I look at it, beer out there, it's pretty.
Big fucking trade. I'm going to work out a trade.
Okay, I like it.
Don't mind, I was going to say.
I think that's the direction, I'll hold it.
I think we've got the direction as Councilman Newitz said.
So go test the waters and provide you some statistics and...
Some statistics. So I think that's what we can start with. Like I said, the problem is, when they first proposed this, you know, like I said, that once they said it was just...